And let's start with an official.
Go ahead.
Thank you all for, yeah, thank you all for being here. Um, and for our February eleventh. Finance and Administration Committee Meeting of Western Oregon University's Board. Uh, we will start officially with roll call.
Thank you Chair Evans, I am just getting Trustee Perez into the panelist room, so I'll give him one more minute. Uh, Chair Evans?
Here.
Trustee Schwartzler?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
And Trustee Zook?
Here.
We have calm chair.
Thank you very much and really appreciate those who have uh shown up for the meeting today because uh we're a little bit thin, if you will, on participation. Uh Betty Komp has uh decided to resign from the Western Oregon Board and this committee. So uh we are are down a member of the committee. And um it's so I really appreciate all of you uh showing up uh for this and I believe that Betty will be receiving some recognition at the upcoming board meeting, so. Um, and I have reached out to her to personally thank her for her service on the board and this committee and uh really leading uh the university and the board through some very difficult times, so she's a very special individual and we're going to miss her. There, that also means that there is some continuity missing on this committee, we're all fairly, well, most of you are new to this committee, I believe all of you are, and so I just want to encourage you to ask questions. Uh either before the meeting or during the meeting. Um carefully look at your docket and just know that once you've done that, you've pretty much prepared yourself for the full board meeting because a lot of that material is in the FAC meetings as well. I'm also excited to note that uh we have a new Vice President of Finance and Administration coming into the university, I believe in early March. And um in hopefully you saw communication in your woo email about this individual, and so we look forward to uh welcoming him uh to our our next meeting. And uh if I can say this correctly, his name is Kwabena Bolaki. And uh has a wonderful uh background at uh private and uh state universities and um was a CPA and a certified internal auditor, so wonderful blend of experience and um we'll be looking forward to meeting him very soon. I would also like to thank uh Cameri for serving on that search committee. And um and for everyone, if anybody else who was on the search committee is here today, um my appreciation to you, I know how much time and effort and um thought goes into those searches, so. Um with that, we will move into the consent agenda, which consists of just one item, and that is approval of our November fifth twenty twenty four meeting minutes. Hopefully you've all had a chance to review, are there any corrections or changes or questions?
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, with that, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Thank you Chair, um Chair Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Schwartzler?
Aye.
And Trustee Zook?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, alright. Moving on to our action items, first on our agenda here is the uh an update or a presentation on the results of the uh single, the financial statement and single audit. Uh and I believe that uh Shadrin will be um presenting the financial statement highlights and then our auditors will be uh from Eid Bailey will be presenting the audit results. Is Shadrin present?
Yeah, Trustee Evan Shadrin's moving into the panelist room, so he should be present momentarily, it looks like he's here. See if he. Shadrin, can you hear us? Looks like you're muted. Here we go.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Awesome. Alright, first part of the presentation is going to focus on the fiscal year end, June thirty twenty twenty four financial statement highlights. Uh so the, excuse me. Uh the focus here is going to be on uh changes, the, to help explain the increases and decreases over the prior year. Uh I'll start with the net position. Uh net position is broken out into three categories on our financial statements. Net investment and capital assets. Uh which is the capital assets, uh the 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 net amount of the capital assets accumulated depreciation and any debt um associated with that capital asset as well. And so the the second part is restricted expendable net position. And the third part is unrestricted net position. Uh as you can see, total net position increased by seventeen million dollars last year. Uh the majority of this one you can see here is in the invested in net investment and capital assets, which increased seventeen point five million dollars. Uh this was associated with quite a few of our projects on campus, as you can see, like Student Success Center, twelve point eight million. Uh Steampipe, another five point five million. Um that was offset a little bit, seven million dollars uh due to depreciation and amortization of those assets. And then it popped up a little bit because of the payments associated with that debt. Uh restricted, uh we had a small decrease of about almost a million dollars. Uh this was associated with some of our grants where we had some uh a decline from year to year in the restricted portion of that amount. And then we have unrestricted, which increased by four hundred and ten. Uh we did have an increase uh related to the operations of two million dollars. Uh this was offset though uh by uh uh changes in the purse liability. And also uh some of that was uh the OPEB, other uh post-employment benefits. For this uh statement of revenues, expenses and changes in that position, uh operating revenues increased by a million dollars. Uh this is broken out with increases in auxiliary activities, one point five million. And uh student tuition and fees uh increase of almost a million. Uh this was offset by some other operating revenue with a decrease of a million dollars. Our operating expenses increased three point two million dollars. Uh you can see the uh the the big change in that was due to compensation and benefits. Uh and then we can go down to non-operating revenues, which increased by the twenty million dollars. Uh of course, the the big chunk of that is associated to the capital projects mentioned above, uh which increased us by about fourteen million dollars. Um statement of cash flows, our 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 cash position decreased by one point two million dollars. Um however, our uh investment, there we go, investment increased by almost half a million dollars. Uh this year, we're including on our highlights a current ratio. Uh this is going to um get measures uh. Well, let me start over. It's the uh it takes the total current assets and divides it by the total current liabilities. Uh as you can see here, uh the the standard is hopefully to have a two to one coverage. And then down below, I have included our five-year trend. And as you can see, we've decreased again and we're at one point zero four five.
If I might mention, this is my really quickly, um I'm going to talk about that a little bit later, um there's some reasons for that decline that aren't um aren't um really related to operational issues. Um there are more to do with um investment activity and how that's categorized in the financial statements, so.
Okay, thanks for that. Um we'd like now to take any questions that you might have over the the uh highlight portion of it before we move into um Kristen Diggs' portion of the uh audit.
No questions for me.
Okay. Uh Kristen Diggs is the independent auditor, she's the audit partner with Eid Bailey. She was in charge of this year's audit, it's single audit, and she has a presentation for you.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sweet, alright, thank you. So as Shadrin said, I am the partner over the financial statement and single audit for Western Oregon University. Um so Cameri, if you want to go to the next slide. So what I figured I would do is kind of go walk through what happens with an audit, kind of walk through when we start the process to where and you see the final result um that you saw in your um your packet. So with our process, we begin um, we begin the audits in the spring, so late spring, usually around April, May, we start talking with management about what changed during the year, as far as the financial statement goes, we're looking at what the federal awards are for the entity, kind of where they're planning on ending for the year for their federal awards and pick which programs we're going to have to test, so each year we were required to test um different programs of the entity if they're over a certain dollar amount, and with this approach, we also look at the risk associated with those, so student financial aid is a bigger program for the university, and so that's usually comes up in the rotation, there's also other programs that are in like a three-year rotation under the requirements of the OMB, and based upon all that, we go through and we we test the single audits. Um we also do a similar approach on the financial statements where we take a risk-based approach, and so we're focusing heavily on your material dollar amounts as far as your assets and liabilities go, we're going through and testing your material revenue streams where we're pulling samples, we're looking at analytics and other kinds of ways to test the various balances to make sure that they appear um reasonable, it's not absolute testing, but it is to say, okay, based upon our testing, we can give an opinion. So if you want to go to the next slide. So based upon all that, we were able to issue the opinion, and there's a couple of different opinions in the packets that you got. So the first one that we'll go over relates to the federal awards, so in what we call the single audit, so with the single audit, the two programs that we took a look at in the current year was the Student Financial Assistance Cluster, which is Student Financial Aid as well as a trio cluster. Um based upon the testing, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the compliance of each major program that we did test, um but we did have certain items that came up in our testing where we were, we were required to report on them. Um the first one is finding two thousand twenty four dash zero two. And this was a material weakness in internal control related to um borrower data and reconciliation, so a school's required to go through and basically reconcile their um their student account statement each month. And what we found was when going through the testing that this was not done during the current year at all, and the reason for that is based upon, the Student Financial Aid Department went through a transition um in the software that they were using, and because of that, they got delayed on everything, and so um because there wasn't anything there to test, we were forced to give a material weakness and internal control. Um on finding two thousand twenty four dash zero three, this related to a significant deficiency in internal control on enrollment reporting. And so enrollment reporting is one of the high-risk areas, so this is one that we have findings in probably almost every single audit, and what they're required to do is basically a student status change, there's certain requirements associated with it and timing, and when we went through and we tested sixty students, we found one where the status that had been reported wasn't updated to what their actual status was. And so that just, it caused an error, and so we were required to report it. The last finding that we had was two thousand twenty four dash zero four, and this was a significant deficiency in internal control related to eligibility, and what happened on this one was there were some resident advisors just due to the transition with the new student financial aid software and everything like that where their aid did not get adjusted correctly, and so they ran it through at a later point in time, but the student allowance for housing did not get taken into account, so they actually got more aid than what they would have normally, and so because of that and because of dollar amount, we were required to report it. Okay, next slide. With the financial statement audit, one of the things we do like to give you a heads up on similar to prior years is there are significant estimates associated with the financial statements that you see, so what those are is basically um your allowance for uncollectible accounts, and so this is management's best guess as to what they think the collectability are on the outstanding accounts receivable that they have on the books as of year end. The other one is related to the um state pension plan as well as the OPEB plans that the university has. These are actuarially determined amounts, but it is it, there's a lot of assumptions that go into it, but it is an estimate, so it could change in any given year based upon what the actuaries are looking at, and so it could cause swings in your financial statements as a result. Um for our audit this year, there were no significant transactions in the current year, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is a clean opinion. And then we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on internal control or financial reporting, we did have um we did have one adjustment that we um that was associated with a reclassification, so subsequent to issuing um there was an error that was found in the restricted long-term cash that should have been shown as current cash. And so this was moved, and so you're going to see a reissuance um paragraph in the opinion, it doesn't mean that it's a modified opinion by any means, it's just saying, hey, this was reissued subsequent to issuance, and so it was corrected, and so now it is fixed. Um as a result of our testing, we did have two pass adjustments. The first one related to accrued payroll of payroll benefits and taxes of one point three million dollars, and what this was when management was going through and looking at their accrued payroll benefits and taxes, they found that it had been under accrued, and so basically for years and years, there's a little bit that had accumulated each year, and so um their estimate right now is that there is a difference of about one point three million, so what we did was pass on it, and they're going to get that fixed during the current fiscal year. Um the other piece is just when we went through and we tested the cash and investment balance with what was in the general ledger against the support, it was off by a hundred and eighty four thousand, so we just passed on that difference. So with that, um are there any questions?
And Chair, if I may, just um so folks know, we do have our Director of Financial Aid, Kella Helyer, Helyer here in the panelist as well as Shadrin as the staff who gave the response to that.
And I will say this, I really do appreciate all the help um that we get from everyone at Western Oregon over the um course of the audit, it is no small undertaking to get through the audit, there's a lot of stuff that we look at, a lot of samples that we pull, and we really do appreciate everyone's efforts in getting through it.
So I have a a quick question, and it's related to the software updates, it sounds like the timing of that made it difficult or caused some of the delays, has that software been implemented, is that um are we through that transition period, or or can we expect that this is going to be an ongoing thing that we're still working through?
Yeah, thank you Kate, this is Kella, um I'll address that question for you. So we did get through the implementation, but in during the implementation process, we lost eight staff members, eight out of ten. And so that greatly contributed to us being behind during the year, and then having a software system that we didn't have a lot of post-implementation support for, and so we didn't even know how to run some of the processes once we even got in there. So that's all been rectified, we are up to speed, everything is running great, and we have some additional um consulting hours that we've used this year through another process that we're doing here at the university. And so we've gotten some additional supports on the system, and so we're feeling very confident going into the twenty five, twenty six year, which we are just now embarking on, so thank you for that.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, uh this is under our action items, do we, um Evan, should we have a motion to accept the financial audit as presented?
Yes Chair, we actually have two votes on this, one is for the financials uh uh statements audit, and then another for the single audit if so we can do um I think in the docket, we have the financial statements first, and so the recommendation, the recommended uh motion is bu- before you in the um on the screen.
I move um to accept the university's fiscal year twenty twenty four audit of financial statements.
Thank you, we have a second?
One second. This is Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? Alright, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Thank you Chair. Chair Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Schwartzler?
Aye.
And Trustee Zook?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. And then here's that single audit recommendation in front of you.
So I'll move with the uh that we were, I think, we recommend uh to the Board of Trustees to accept the university's fiscal year twenty twenty four single audit and management's proposed corrective action plan.
I'll second. Thank you. Discussion? Alright, let's move to roll call vote.
Chair, Chair Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Schwartzler?
Aye.
Trustee Zook?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Alright. Now we are, thank you, uh uh thank you for the presentation. Uh we really appreciate the work of the external auditors and all of the uh cooperation uh that um happened within the university during some pretty tumultuous times, so um good to have that um addressed and the action plans in place, and um now it's time to uh look at the year-end management report uh presented by our Director of Budget and Planning, Cameri, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Trustee Evans. Alright, so the, this report is as of, sorry, I'm trying to get it to Zoom. I cannot talk and do that at the same time. Okay, so this report is as of December thirty first twenty twenty four, um January just closed, so we weren't able to get in the January thirty fourth before the docket needed to be posted. Um but I did kind of poke around, and I think our projections are holding pretty true based on January year and actuals as well. Um the big caveat here with this report, if I'm, if you read the the write-up on this, was that we had a significant timing difference. Um so in the management report, I'm always looking at the most current closed period, so in this case, December thirty first twenty twenty four, and I'm comparing it to the prior year, so December thirty first twenty twenty three. Um typically, we would assess tuition for winter term in that month of December, which is what we did this year. But two years ago, there was a delay, and it didn't get assessed until period seven. Um eh, so when comparing period seven or period six this year to period six last year, um there's a huge difference when winter term tuition assessment is in one and not the other. So in my write-up, I tried to capture all of those moving pieces, but I apologize in advance because this is wh- what I would consider to be a more confusing management report than some. Um but to attempt to, you know, kind of capture those variances, what I did um in the write-up was I actually compared prior year P sevens, that it includes winter term, and then mid P six as of like January fifteenth to do that, that comparison, to try and get us the actuals that both include winter term. It won't be perfect because there's always adds and drops that happen, and so it's not the exact same point in time, but it should be roughly close. Um so with all of that, we do see a tuition increase from the prior year um of about um one point one million. Um about three hundred thousand of that is the first cohort of occupational therapy students, so this fall was our first year of the occupational therapy students. Um we also had pretty much five percent tuition increases across the board. And so those two increases combated our approximate three percent enrollment decline in undergrad for fall term. What else was really interesting is, while you know, for undergrad, it's a pretty typical, we will get our fall numbers, and in this case, they were slightly down, and then we'll see some attrition from term to term. Graduate students actually went up from fall to winter term, they aren't so typical with some of their enrollments, um but to see such a large increase, which was eight percent of FTE, not counting our occupational therapy, was quite an anomaly, um but that that helped our overall tuition picture. Online course fees are an effective decrease of two hundred thousand dollars, and this is just due to that decrease in enrollment that we saw. Also, there's been some conscientious effort to decrease our online offerings, and so as that, you know, those courses are decreased, we'll see the decrease in the resulting online course fee revenue. Um other fees also slightly decreased, just again with that enrollment decrease, and fear emissions have an effective increase of about a hundred and eighty thousand, and some of that is due to the timing differences too. So altogether, that results in our tuition and fees being up slightly compared to last year, and it's really just driving that five percent tuition increase that results that. Government resources and allocations have decreased by two hundred and fifty thousand, but there's a pretty big caveat here too. Um last year, we received a million of sustainability funds that were theoretically one time, that was our first tranche of sustainability funds um that we didn't receive this year, so if you're talking about just what we received from this typical state appropriation, the student success and completion model, we actually had an increase of seven hundred and seventy thousand. And that is due to us being in the second year of the biennia. So the the state appropriation was a billion for the twenty twenty three, twenty five biennia. Of that billion to the seven publics, they distribute forty nine percent in the first year, which was last year for us, and fifty one percent in this year, and so that's why we see the slight bump in the state appropriation. Gift grants and contracts have also increased slightly from prior year, and other revenues have decreased a little bit. So altogether, our total revenues are about one million more than the prior year, um when you're accounting for the differences in the tuition assessment as well as the sustainability funds. On the expense side, our personnel is about one point seven million more than last year, I mean, this is due to a combination, we've had raises to all of our different categories of employees, so faculty receive about a four percent COLA. Um unclassified receives about a three point two five percent, which was effective November first, and then classified staff have received a several COLAs, six point five percent, two percent. I mean, they're set to receive another three point five percent COLA, and then they also are eligible for their step increases on their respective anniversary dates if they're not already maxed out on step ten. So all of those various COLAs are kind of what's contributing to that one point seven million, as well as there's always slight differences in our levels of staffing and faculty. And the other one there too is our uh benefits, so our health insurance, we are now assessing at a higher rate, and so that increase there is impacted as well on that one point seven. Services and supplies were down six hundred and fifty thousand, and this is the one that for years, ever since COVID, makes me the most nervous when I'm doing my projections, because it continues to be so atypical. Um a lot of this analysis is assuming that we have pretty typical spending patterns throughout the year. And then while that used to hold true for services and supplies five years ago, it just has not held true. Um so I'm showing that we're six hundred and fifty thousand services, supplies savings, but this one um does make me a little bit nervous as far as if it will continue to hold, that we are so far down in services and supplies this year. Switching to our auxiliaries, um they had the same challenge as tuition assessment also includes room and board assessment, it also includes our health service fee or incentive fee, and so all of those same timing challenges carry over and impacted our auxiliaries as well. Um but altogether, their enrollment fees have effectively decreased by about a hundred thousand, um and this is primarily related to those enrollment decreases that we are talking about. Sales and services, there is another layer that is causing Sales and services, there is another layer that is causing discrepancies in our annual comparisons here. This one is dining. So I think you all will recall that dining changed the way that they do their meal plans. It used to be that they had a card and it had a set amount of dollars, and they would go and they would check out and use those dollars on their cards, and then a JV would be done to account for the amount that they have used. And this year, they've implemented a "all you can carry," I believe is the correct phrase, where they just get so many swipes. I think Tina talked to you all about that. It was an effort for food security and the reasons behind that. But what it has done on the accounting side has created a new challenge in how to account for that used income. And so there's some discrepancy there from year to year. So that's another comparison point where we don't have a really good prior year comparison to compare this to. So while sales and services looks like it's down a million, it's not what I would consider a true million down. And we're waiting for that to kind of be cleaned up so that we can get an accurate picture of that discrepancy. Other revenue is holding pretty steady, so overall, our auxiliaries, I would say, are a little bit down on the revenue side. And then on the expense side, they are up as well. So personnel, they're slightly up due to those same salary and benefit adjustments that we talked about. And then SNS, they're up as well. And I dug into kind of what auxiliaries were driving that. And it is primarily athletics, and some of it is their decree, or the timing differences in travel. This year, they have a new business operations position that I think is booking travel earlier. And so that is leading to some of the timing discrepancy, but also travel continues to increase in cost as well. So that's the other driver. Lastly, for a year-to-year comparison, as the DESOPS and the service funds, and as a reminder, this is primarily telecommunications as well as Oregon Council of Presidents, OCOP. And then the Clearing Fund also includes a tuition clearing fund. And yet again, that pesky assessment is kind of throwing off some of our year-to-year balances. So last year, the Clearing Fund hadn't been cleared as of December 31st, whereas this year, you can see that it was much closer to being cleared. So that decrease isn't quite a fair decrease necessarily in the comparison. But overall, I would say DESOPS and Service, they're holding steady. So switching gears, that's where we were as of December 31st. So then I use all of that data to try and project to where we're going to end up to the end of the year. I show you what last year's actuals were, where I think we're going to end up, and compare that to the budget. And overall, on the revenue side, I think that we're going to be maybe slightly better than budget, but coming in pretty close. Right now, I have that we're projecting tuition fees to be about 250,000 better than budget. Government resource allocation slightly down. They released a true-up on the education technology sustainability funds that we received, but we're getting 84,000 less than we got last year that hadn't been accounted for in the budget yet. Gift grants and contracts, these are primarily our indirects that we see from the grants. They continue to be pretty strong so far. But as I'm sure you're all aware, we will continue to watch where we're thinking that is going. As of right now, this projection is built upon maintaining status quo for the current year-to-date. And then other revenue, it looks like we're going to come in pretty close. So altogether, I'm projecting revenues for general fund to be about 73.7 million, which is about 600,000 better than our budget is. On the expense side, personnel, we're projecting to be 60.7 million, which is about 300,000 over budget. As a reminder, in the budget, we incorporated for staff central salary savings due to vacant positions of about 1 million, 1.3 million with benefits on that. And then we also, for the first time, included faculty savings of 830,000 with OP on top of that. And so if we don't quite make it, we were pretty aggressive with how we budgeted for those central savings. But I also am hopeful that that 300,000 maybe will parse out in the coming months of the projection. And then services and supplies, right now, I'm projecting 10.1, which would be a savings of 1.6 million, but this is the number that I would tell you all that I am the least confident in my projection of. So we will continue to update that number and see where we go. The projection for net transfers, you'll note that we're 600,000 over the budget. That is a reflection of anticipating a larger subsidy for our athletics than we originally budgeted. We originally budgeted 5.2, but we are continuing to monitor them and then watch where their spending is, and we think that it's going to take a little bit more than a 5.2 million subsidy to make them whole this year. So adding in all of those factors for E and G, we had a budget deficit of 4.6 million. And I'm projecting right now a 3.3 million actual deficit. So adding that to our beginning fund balance, I showed that we would end our fiscal year with 14%. And as a reminder, you all have set a target of 5% to 15% with an exact target of 10% to 12%. So as of now, while we are continuing to spend, we are hopefully spending less than the budget showed and also still maintaining that fund balance, hopefully for a while longer. On the auxiliary side, these projections, I am projecting slightly better than budget for revenues as well, primarily in other revenues, primarily as a result of increased conference activity. That number also maybe will shift as we get past that funny timing difference. And then on the expense budget, I'm also projecting that they're going to be over budget. It's pretty typical when we see with their auxiliaries when they are over budget on revenue because they are more of our business type and they have to buy more food if they're selling more food or those sorts of things, that we also see correlating responses in their expense side. So right now, I'm projecting that they should just about break even at the end of the year and maintain their fund balance. And then DESOPS and services, right now, we're projecting that they're going to be coming in better than budget on both. That primarily that other revenue was the driver, but again, I'm continuing to watch this one more closely. Any questions I could answer about anything?
Hey, Cameri. On the services and supplies, is that where we find like consulting, management consulting fees? And is there some kind of guardrail that can be put in, or is there one in place to really vet those expenses before they're committed, or some of these ongoing commitments? Do you have a sense of that?
A little bit, and I also can defer to Mike. When it comes to large contracts, we have a whole contract process where it actually goes through either Mike or a lawyer or a president to be signed, and so we can't commit to ongoing costs without the three of them having eyes on it. No one else is currently authorized to be the signer on those contracts.
And do you know what the ratio between services and supplies is?
I do not. We don't look at it like that. I apologize.
That's okay.
I certainly could, though. I could look that up and get it to you.
Thank you.
I think Cam answered that well. We do have those processes in place to to have visibility to contracts because they need to be signed by me or the president.
And do you happen to know if some are multi-year contracts or if they're all for the same academic year?
Many of them cross academic years. Some of them don't. I mean, it's kind of, it depends. I mean, we're entering some contracts around the banner optimization program that will be spanning multiple years. And it really depends, like construction contracts may span years, fiscal years, but I think most don't. It's a non-precise answer, most.
Yeah. Are there are there mechanisms to track the outcomes of those consulting engagements and follow those for ROI, or has that structure not been?
You know, that hasn't been in place that I'm aware of. I've been here five months, so I give it that caveat. But I'm not aware of that structure being in place. I know that with our banner optimization project, we're, you know, having metrics around outcomes and the project management team that we contracted with through Oregon State, which is part of a, they've got a big contract, a project management office there. They have a lot of discipline around that ROI calculations and such around projects that they manage. So I would expect to see some of that through that project, but at this point in time, I don't know of any overall process in place. Tom, you might want to add something there?
I just came on, so I didn't hear the question, sorry.
We were talking about consulting professional services, and once those contracts are assigned, are there mechanisms to track outcomes of those engagements and ROI from those engagements? And you have a big one with banners, so apparently that's why you're being asked right now.
So there's no formal processes of this point for the banner optimization project, but we do have a steering committee, so, which, which several people are on, including Mike and President Peters. And so we have our goals to be fully optimized on the banner side, and if there's any circumstance where we discover we won't be able to be, or if there's additional resources required, that will go to the steering committee. But the full ROI piece, that's not really part of the calculations for the inner optimization. I would say that there is cost savings expectation because these funds are coming from the state, so that will be measured, the cost savings. Yeah, so there's a the formalized ROI process is not there yet, though.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Don't be afraid to ask. We have a lot of different sources of revenue, and it's complicated. And we could play stump Cameri. I think I finally stumped her for the first time in three years, so with random ad hoc questions. All right, okay, not hearing other questions. We do have a need for a motion to accept the management report as of December 31st.
So move. This is Mark.
Thank you. Second? Anyone?
I'll second.
All right, and discussion? All right, hearing none. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Chair. Chair Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Schwartzler?
Aye.
Trustee Zook?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. So we've gone through our action items here, and let's do a little time check. It is 1:47. Okay, we're doing good. In fact, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. And it may be too early for our Uback presentation. So what do you recommend, Evan?
Well, Chair, Melanie is in the attendance, so we could move her into participation, but I would probably recommend we take our break now, and I can reach out to Uback and UTAC folks to make sure who's not in the attendance or panelists get on the call so that they're ready to go.
That sounds great. I'd appreciate that. So we'll take a 10-minute break. And so that will put us, well, we'll call it 13 minutes. Put us right at the top of the hour, then. At 2 o'clock, we will reconvene.
Great. You, Chair.
Thank you.
Sorry, now we can go.
Thank you, Evan. Could you do a quick roll call to make sure we still have quorum?
Yeah. Chair, Chair Evans?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Present.
Trustee Schwartzler?
Here.
And trustee Zook?
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. All right. Do we need to adjust the agenda sequencing here, or we are ready to roll into the Uback report?
We have folks from both Uback and UTAC in the participant room, ready to go.
Oh, thank you all. Excellent. And it looks like Dr. Landon Hayes?
Yeah, I'm here with my co-chair, Zach Camerly. Nice to see you all. I'm going to start and give you all a summary of what we've done, and Zach will add in some details. We've met three, well, twice this term, and we had a full committee. We were so good at staffing our committee, and then we lost two members in the last couple of weeks. Noah Corio took a job with McMinnville Fire Department, and Jenna Otto has left for another job as well. So we are going to work on re-staffing our committee. We did submit our reports in the model that has the core values and the mission in it. Our goal is to start aligning our work with those key values and mission statements, and then to also start to develop as we get the new VPFA here a strategic plan for the Uback committee. We have worked really hard this last term and since probably December to try to get student representation on the committee. It's a struggle sometimes to get them to attend because of their class schedules, not surprisingly. And so we have been taking robust notes and keeping detailed agendas to keep in touch with them. We have also been working consistently, probably the most, on our goals for institutional sustainability. We were able to participate in the VPFA search. They gave the Uback committee a chance to meet with each candidate. We were really impressed with the slate of candidates. We liked meeting with all of them. We thought that it was an impressive slate, and we're really excited about KB coming to WU. We especially liked his background in auditing and his work at that sort of detailed granular level. And I think that for our committee, that's really appealing to be able to see some of that disaggregated data and to see how he'll be able to lead with that, although we will miss Mike. He's only been here for five months, but we have so enjoyed working with him, and he's been such a great support for our committee as well. We're working on replacing Noah Corio as one of our tri-chairs. Like I said, he's gone on to another position. And then the other thing that we've been doing with our meetings is we were able to get from Cameri and Mike the year-long budgeting plan that they use, and we've been trying to align our meeting topics with their year-long budgeting plan so that we are in step with them. I'd say the bulk of our meetings have been around trying to figure out that sort of disaggregated piece, that place where we try to understand the criteria for the way that budgets are made. And what we found across, and this is my last bullet point in institutional sustainability, and I'll have Zach add to this. But one of the things that I think we're trying to figure out is maybe where the black boxes are on campus, like where there are good details and there's places where people understand the criteria that is used to make decisions, and there are other places where they are not so clear. One of the places that we've been trying to get information on, and it's just a difficult one because of a lot of the changes, there's, I don't think there's any malfeasance or any negligence. It's just that we've had so much change on campus, and that's in academic affairs. And so a couple of weeks ago, we received allotments for instructional faculty, and they are a lot less than I think what people have had and what they were expecting to sustain their programs. So we've been trying to kind of work as a committee on figuring out how you determine if a program is profitable, if a program's not, what your tipping points are for that, and knowing that that's not really our decision as a Uback committee. You know, we're in advisory and we're sort of holistic. And so we're really excited about Provost Cole's initiative that he's putting forward to have an academic affairs budgeting committee that will work with Uback and have representation. And I think we've started some good conversations and asked some really good questions that have sort of aligned with that. But I'm hoping that that's, I'm not hoping, our whole committee is hoping that that's where we kind of go, is figuring out how you determine that feasibility of a program, when it's, you know, when it's okay to operate at a loss, when you need to keep operating at a profit, and what that does for the sustainability of the institution. And so I think we have some really good conversations coming forward. I'm not sure that we have any answers at this point, but our goal is to start asking those questions that help us to fine-tune and support a process like that. Zach, do you want to jump in?
Sure. I mean, I just wanted to, you know, kind of read it. In fact, that's awesome, Melanie. Thank you so much. And thanks to Cameri and Mike. They've been so great as being a part of this committee, and we're really really hoping our transition goes smoothly, and we can still continue to be what we've, I think, really focused on over the past couple of months. really focused on over the past couple of months and last term is really getting information out to as many of people who ask us questions that we can, um, all around. And so just again, like Uback, I think, especially with the, you know, transition period here, is like being able to provide people good data that, that ask us those questions and then continuing to be able to move forward. And that's why we ask, you know, such big tasks from Cameri and Mike all the time is because we want to make sure that we're telling, telling folks who ask us the right information around campus. So, no, I just wanted to make sure, you know, everyone knows we're, we're doing our best.
Any questions we can answer?
Uh, could we scroll down a little more into the report on the screen? Here we go.
And we did have one fewer meeting this term. Um, we excused the committee from meeting so that they could attend the interviews with the VPFA's. We kind of gave them back their time, um, so that we can encourage their participation.
And can you give us a flavor of some of the questions you had for the candidates?
Oh, that's a very good question, Gail. Um, let me, I bet you I can find those questions.
Well, just top of mind, I.
Uh, I think we asked them what their, their. Zach, do you remember? January feels like months ago, Gail.
It sure does, but we, we had questions on budget strategy and communicating transparently or transparently to constituents involved. Really, we wanted to know, you know, how is this person going to work with all of the folks who are going to be asking them questions on things and why decisions are potentially made? And of course, um, you know, we, we're hopefully going to be working with them a lot moving forward. Um, so we did ask them some questions on, you know, just budgeting style and where, you know, they think they can fit in here. Um, which KB was great. I attended that interview and we're happy to see that come forth. And we're, I mean, Melanie already said it, but we really do, I think the whole committee is fond of Mike. And so to see him go is, we knew he was interim. It's okay. Mike, I know you're on the call. Thanks for being here.
A, a big question we asked at the end was how they would leverage our committee too. Uh, you know, it's a committee that is well-staffed across campus. You've got this representative body. And, you know, in the last couple of years, I wouldn't say we, we've struggled, but we have struggled a little bit. Um, as we didn't have an acting VPFA and then while we've had interims. So we'd like to really figure out how our committee can work with the VPFA in a permanent way to be advocates and to understand what's going on across campus and be an information source for them so that we are advising appropriately. And so we appreciated, it seemed like all three candidates had good experience with that. Um, but we felt like KB had some really strong, not just experience, but concrete ideas going forward of what he would do.
Great, thank you. We look forward to meeting him. Ah, and I'd see a chat that Mike is appreciating Zach and Melanie and working together. That's, that's wonderful. All right, any other questions for our Uback team? Okay. Thank you so much for your report and presentation and we appreciate what you're doing and, and look forward to seeing more collaboration and hopefully improve transparency. That's going to be, you know, key as we continue to dig deep and try to work on that sustainability model going forward. And, you know, as we know, without transparency, then where there are, there is a lack of trust. You know, people fill in the blanks with their imaginations or their worries or their anxieties. And so I appreciate that, the effort to, you know, understand why some things aren't fully transparent right now, but to have a shared understanding that we need to do better in some areas. So thank you for working on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to our technology advisory committee.
Thanks Chair Evans. Hi, my name is Tom Luterer. And I'm one of the tri-chairs of the UTAC team. And Amy Clark is here as well. She's a tri-chair and will be presenting in a few minutes here. And Shel Bachelor is one of our tri-chairs and she's away today. So just Amy and I will be here. So the UTAC team, University Technology Advisory Committee, we met twice since the, the last time we all met in November and, and January. And, um, mostly, you know, we're focusing on the ongoing work. And, um, primarily in the, the strategic plan areas of institutional sustainability and transformational diversity. And most of it, you know, for IT groups in general is usually in the sustainability area. So we have a lot of activity and, you know, sustainability. I'm going to go a little bit out of order so that I can, I'll talk about a piece, then Amy can talk about some other pieces. We, we spoke a lot about banner optimization the last time I met with you. And, um, so I'm going to go over the highlights of what activities we've had in banner optimization. Um, last time, well, one of the, the key things that we, we talked about in the UTAC was what we needed for an identity and access management system. So the UCS team came in and spoke with UTAC about some several IAM, identity and access management options. And, um, and then the team members from UTAC shared, you know, what their expectations were for, you know, an IAM tool. And after that meeting and, um, some discussions with Oregon State and, and the system that they used, we, we did finally arrive on a tool called Okta that will be our new identity and access management system. And we are, the UCS team is beginning to work on the deployment and implementation process. So that's, that's one item. And, you know, UTAC is, was definitely excited to have this, this new solution come in that would help with, um, you know, with the login process. And, um, oh, I think the one of the main things that UTAC was excited about was the, the quick and easy way to onboard and offboard employees. And, um, and then password changing will be a lot simpler and, and many things like that. So then the other items for, from the banner optimization were around, the business process analysis that we're going to do on, on multiple areas of banner. We actually did have a BPA, um, session for the financial aid area of banner. We had somebody from our consultant come on site and spent, it was three days with the financial aid team and those who work with financial aid. And that, that went really well. And, um, I think that the team is very, financial aid team now is very confident in their ability to meet expectations. And then they also have a roadmap of changes that need to be completed in order to be baseline and fully utilize what Banner has to offer. We, we also had, um, the BPA for the student portion, and Amy will talk about that later. Um, and we have the business process analysis scheduled to work with Banner HR in May. And, um, so we're excited for that when, um, when that comes up. And last time we, we, we met, we spoke a lot about CASE. And, and that's the tool that will really help us with our software inventory. And we had some discussions in, in the UTAC meeting about how can we better utilize our, our software? And, um, you know, is there some software that we've purchased that maybe is unnecessary because we have other software that's similar to it? And we might be over purchasing licenses. And CASE will help see where licenses, um, have been installed, but the UTAC team will also be involved in making decisions on maybe what software we don't necessarily need, or maybe there, there are lower cost options. Um, but so we had some good discussions in, in the UTAC meeting about, about software. So did I cover everything, Amy?
I believe.
I think I went for my area. So I think Amy has more updates on the, um, what happened in the student BPA. And, uh, go ahead.
Um, Trustee Perez has his hand up.
Yeah.
Hey Ray.
Ray.
Hey, hey, Tom. A quick question on the CASE part of this. Is the goal for planning to find out, uh, uh, are you going to run it to where it looks at software that's out there to see how often it's utilized and underutilized software is ones that you're going to look at removing from the environment? Is that what you're looking at doing?
Yes, definitely. Like one example of that is Adobe, where we, we pay quite a bit for some Adobe licenses. And, um, so we're, we're tracking to see how well that's being utilized or if it is even being utilized. And I think there'll be some changes in that area. I mean, that's an obvious one. We're, we're also looking for, once we get more proficient with the tool, um, you know, what software is there? And then we'll have to manually look at, you know, what um, how this, what services that software provides and, and then see if there's any duplication of services. That's going to be a little bit harder and that'll be down the road.
Right. Yeah. Uh, is it a plan to bring that back to this board to kind of review that unlike what you're recommending? Is that, is that on your agenda to do or no?
Not, not necessarily. Oh, we'll bring it back to, to UTAC. Um, but if you want, we can bring back some results, um, like these are.
Yeah.
We, uh, removed, yeah. I think that's still probably won't be next time. Um, and like for the Adobe contract, it's still, we had a three-year contract. It still is going to last another year. So a lot of that work won't happen. So.
Yeah. I was sorry. I probably didn't say this the right way. I was thinking more like super high level. Like, yes, we have this many duplicates. It'll save us as much annually in licensing costs or whatever you guys come up with as part of that recommendation when you guys get that all figured out.
Yeah. Probably a year from now.
Sounds good.
And just to clarify, it wouldn't be something we would expect to approve. It just, we would like to have an update. This is very interesting and kind of aligns with some of the earlier conversation around consulting fees. And, you know, are we, you know, um, you know, and especially multi-year, uh, and even, you know, what kind of approval process? Is there a control point in, um, IT for new subscriptions that people might want to layer in? And so just looking for updates on that.
And that's definitely what the UTAC wants to do as well. Um, you know, be, define what the process is and make sure that process is being followed. We, every, every software purchase does come through UCS, um, today. And, um, we do have our eyes on, on a lot of, a lot of the software. We don't always necessarily say no when someone asks for, you know, a different way of doing the same thing. But if we have a policy or a process around that, then it would be easier to say no. And that's what UTAC will be working on.
Thank you. I have a question about banner used for payroll. And it, so if, if I'm not in sync with where we're at in that process, we were running payroll through the Department of Administrative Services with the state. Now we're running payroll through Banner. And then this plan here is saying that we're going to reorganize payroll in Banner somehow. Can you kind of help me understand where we are on the payroll side of things?
Maybe there's someone here, Mike, who knows more than I do.
I mean, I can speak to it a little bit, but Evan has it.
Chair Evans, I.
Good.
I just let Desi in, um, who can help answer that question.
Thank you.
Hello. I hope everybody's well. Um, in terms of, um, reorganization of banner payroll, we have been using banner payroll. It's just, um, with this banner optimization project, we are updating our processes so that it is not so, uh, based on modifications. There was quite a bit of, of our processes that were done with UC, USSE, um, where we would run the process, we'd send them, we'd go back and forth. But now we've taken that all in-house. Um, we were fortunate enough to hire one of those individuals and who is now our Director of Payroll Services with some changes recently in HR and payroll. But with this banner optimization project, this is, you know, we are working on getting, um, payroll, HR banner, payroll banner back to basics, meaning we're not going to have so many modifications. We can run the process. Anybody that has been trained can run the run sheet for payroll. Um, those kind of things.
Okay. And will this optimization or use of banner help with, um, uh, workflows to make sure the university is updating the employee contributions for benefits and so on and so forth?
Correct. Um, and so that's one thing that we, you know, Crystal Ayers is that individual who was hired between her, Julie McMurray and myself. We've kind of started to do some of this, you know, reconciliation and kind of looking at some things. And one of the things in terms of, as you've noticed, is our benefits. You know, we were charging, you know, 14, 16 a month, you know, for benefit, health insurance for quite some time. But knowing that, you know, those costs have changed, um, over the years. And so we've been working with the business office and with Mike closely, making sure that we are, um, where we need to be. Um, but yes, that is a big part of what we're doing. We're continuously reconciling, um, things that have not been reconciled for some time. Um, and, um, and like, we just keep going.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Amy, sorry, we kind of stepped into with questions and, and didn't allow you to present your portion.
That's quite all right. I was actually gonna, um, jump in a little bit with, um, part of what I was going to talk about intersects with what Desiree is, is discussing. So we've had, um, the Strata, Strata Information Group consultants on campus. Tom spoke a little bit about their work with financial aid. Uh, we spent three days with them last week, um, discussing student. Um, and they did some, some good work with us there. We got to spend a lot of time talking about, uh, configurations for self-service nine, which is going to be a new interface, um, for, um, for Wolf Web, uh, that is just a more modern interface. It's also something we need to move to, um, because the current interface is not going to be supported any longer. Um, but the part of that conversation that really intersects with what Desiree was discussing was my conversations with, uh, the consultants about the faculty load and compensation uh, function in Banner that has, uh, that ties student and instructor records and course workload values to, um, HR and payroll. And, uh, those two areas are supposed to function together in a more streamlined way um, to help, um, be able to get reports and feed into payroll and make all these systems more efficient. So in our conversations with, uh, Strata, that's one of the areas that, um, we want to focus on um, to further, um, So in our conversations with uh Strata, that's one of the areas that um we wanna focus on um to further um. Provide more information, you know, to administrators and to faculty and staff and to HR and payroll. So we really have a better understanding where we stand. Um, relative to faculty load and compensation. So that's gonna be one of the areas of focus with the Banner Optimization. Um, it's a pretty. Pretty complicated but critical portion of Banner that we just um, we've really only scratched the surface of. So that is uh one of the things that we've talked about at UTAC and the Banner Optimization Project. It's gonna. Um, that I think is gonna have a pretty transformative effect on campus. It's, I imagine that is a, a couple of years project. Um, it's gonna take a while to, to get that done. Um, and just the other part that we've talked about, as I mentioned, um. Well, Tom touched on this briefly. We've talked a lot in UTAC about security and access management. And Desiree, myself, uh, Calla Helyer, um, Ashley Schonberg and some others that are in charge of approving access to various systems based on the roles of individuals. Um, have been meeting to discuss how we can streamline that. Um, and how we can work with Tom and his unit with the Identity Access Management. To automate some of the things that are currently just very manual and involve emails and PDFs. Um, so we're trying to streamline that process so we can onboard people more quickly and use our resources more effectively. Um, rather than, you know, all of us were very busy um tracking down emails about who wants access to what. So that's an ongoing conversation uh that you're pointing back to. To UTAC to keep folks in the loop on that.
Cool. Um. And if you have any questions for Amy, I have one more thing to, to present here. So. We, we do also do some work and um. The transformational diversity and a big discussion topic for this. Past couple of meetings was? The um digital accessibility policy. And so the UTAC team created a new subcommittee for um. Digital accessibility. And the subcommittee met in early January and made a decision that? That they want to, to meet weekly in order to quickly um put together this policy. So I think we've, we're on week three. Of five weeks. Where um we've, we have a good framework for the policy and now we have individuals that are refining each section of the digital accessibility policy. And with a goal to present that to the, the rest of UTAC. At our, our next um. I guess it's gonna be a mini retreats um on February twenty first. So um. So pretty aggressive schedule, but um we know that there's a need for. This, the digital accessibility policy and um there's been a lot of work, not, not just by UTAC members, but folks who? Around campus are really interested in this topic and have brought in their expertise. All right, I think that's all we have.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't think I can see all that. All the participants and hands that might be raised. Not hearing anything. I do, I just wonder how is the data center coming along? I haven't been on campus for a while.
Um, so the, the existing data center is um actually doing fairly well. We um, we had a big cleanup. I don't know if you heard about that, where um? Facilities has an, an auditor come through and um. And they, they pointed out some, some errors and there's, you know, having, we had cardboard and, and some wires on the floor. And um, so we had a big cleanup team and got, removed all the cardboard, um brought in some storage. Plastic storage containers to, to put the wires in and um, it gets much better organized. Um. There was a, you know. Toward the end of summer, a new air conditioning unit was put in and, and tomorrow, so a new controller is going to be installed to um. That. To allow some automation for the, the damper that's letting cool air in or keeping it out. Um. So that's. So I, I think we're in, in pretty good shape at, at this point. Um. The, as far as the new data center, I, I, last I heard was um. You know, the state legislature probably won't decide on what, what projects are funded until maybe June. So um. Yeah. But we're, we're hopeful that's um something will come together.
Thank you. Okay. Well, let's move along then to our next agenda item. And that is our finance and administration report. From Mike Green. Our interim VPFA. We do thank you. Is this your last report, Mike? Or will you be staying on for a? Onboarding to, to help KB onboard?
Well, I suspect this is my whole last and only report. Remember, I was in Hawaii with my wife on the fortyth for the last one. Uh, and then, you know, in April, I think the next one is in April and KB should be on and um, and taking that on. So yeah, it will be my. First and only, but uh, um, really appreciate the. The opportunity, appreciate the time I've spent here. Um, it's really. I have to think about it a lot sometimes about how, how different it is um at a university, um at a regional university versus. Uh, at a, you know, R1 um. Um, university like Oregon State. Um, and I mean, the, the similarities are people that are passionate about the work. People that are working hard to um impact student lives and to advance the goals that our students have. Um, the uh, the differences are um scale, um complexity in some sense. Um, and of course, resources um are different. Uh, you'd, you'd be surprised at how. Um, we would argue over small amounts of money at a budget about a one point six billion at Oregon State. Uh, but it all, it all matters. It all rolls up and then you have it all allocated and you have it all dedicated. And then when you're talking about? Changes, it gets the same, it's the same conversation, the same discussions, the same angst and worries and, and concerns and rightfully so. So. Um, I have, have to think more about some of the differences at some point, but um, it's been great. Um. And I'll stop with that until maybe later. Um, you know, looking at my report that I put in the, in the docket, um. I wanted to kind of focus a little bit on just some kind of um back to baseline, back to basics, whatever, if you will. Uh, that I've been focusing on since in my time here. Uh, you know, cash is king and um. Uh, thinking about, you know, our, our recent uh trend lines and enrollments and deficit budgets, it. Felt it was important that we, you know, focus on managing cash position and liquidity. And we've done that. Um, you see our latest cash forecast in the docket. Um, you know, it shows we project an overall decline in cash balances of about thirteen million from thirty-seven to twenty-four million. A lot of that, about eight point one million of it is the spend down on the steam line project funding that was advanced to us. So there's a lot of that has to do with that. Um, the remaining five million cash balance decline, which is more than we would expect when we look at the last projections that um. That Cam uh talked to in the quarterly reports. Um, is, is um likely to, due to perhaps imprecision in some of the uh parts of our model that we're looking to. Uh, to improve. You see some variances in that model uh from month to month as what we predict and what actually happens. And so there's a lot going on. And we're working to get better at that. Um. So for the rest of the year, as the rest of the year unfolds, we'll be monitoring. How well our, our projections track with actuals and working to improve our forecasting. Uh, what that, of course, does is um. Helps us to manage our liquidity in terms of how much we invest a little bit further out on the yield curve through our um investment program. Um, and also just, of course, ensures that we have adequate liquidity as we go forward. Um, I don't really plan to go into much more detail on the cash forecast. It's there. Um, if you have any questions on what I just talked about on cash and? And cash flows? Always come back to it. Um. One of the important factors that does impact our cash balances is our growing sponsored projects activity. Uh, you know, we've been increasing our sponsored projects after activity over the years and? Those generally are cost reimbursable grants. So we expend the money, the cash goes out. And then we uh submit reimbursements to the various agencies that fund those projects. And that puts us in a negative cash position. And, and we did, I asked Cam to do an analysis of that over the last couple of years and? Our average negative balance in those funds is around seven million. And that's an area of opportunity for us to look at. And we're doing that. We're working with the Sponsored Project Office to um. Uh, look at our pro, our processes, see if we need to add some resources around squeezing that down. You know, if we just, if we cut that in half, that's, you know, three and a half million dollars more liquidity, three and a half more, a million dollars more invested. And at four point six percent minimum with our cash balances, that's real money. And so we're gonna go out, go after that. And that will help all the things that we think about going forward with our, our budgeting and our, our cash uh management going forward. Um, any questions around that? Okay, as Shatter noted in his audit financial statements, the working capital is declining. I mentioned that earlier. Um, and our cash position has an impact on that liquidity metric. Um, right now, how the balance sheet's classified is that any? Cash that's invested outside of the state treasury short-term investment pool is considered a non-current. I think that's a place where we need to look and look at counting principles and push the envelope on that a little bit, not beyond counting principles. But I think. That may be an area where we can think about reclassifying even some of that that's in that. Longer-term investment as current, because current is, you know, one year and we can't, we do have, we do have access to that cash within thirty days. So I think. That's one place we can look, but we, even regarding that, or even um putting that aside. Um, we can manage that amount we have invested to manage our um current ratio. And? It's important because, you know, and I'll mention it a bit later here. Um, line of credit, you know, we're looking to get a new line of credit and? That metric's gonna be one that a bank looks at, I'm sure. And so thinking about how we manage our balance sheet going forward. Uh, again, given some of the, you know, as, as we talk about our budgets going forward, our plans going forward. This is another place where I think we can pay some attention, pay some more attention. Uh, managing those metrics within, you know, allowable actions that we can take. To um ensure that we have a stronger working capital position and manage our liquidity better. Another tool, I think I just mentioned it, is, you know, the line of credit. And we had a line of credit at, that uh um. Uh, sunsetted December thirty-first. I've in, uh, hired Public Financial Management LLC, PFM. Which I've worked with for many, many years that they're working to um seek um uh proposals for a line of credit. I had hoped we'd have that done for this meeting, but it didn't go as fast as we had hoped. Uh, we're still looking to get that done and that will come back to you in a later meeting. Um, I will say though, I'm not concerned near term because as you saw the cash flow projections. You know, we, we don't seem, we don't have a liquidity uh concern in the near term. So. Uh, we will advance that as quickly as we can and get that proposal to you. And then uh, we are looking at updating our five-year financial plan. You know, we had our sustainability plan when the creditors came. Um, that last plan um had us generating, you know, by now. A million or so of net new revenues and reducing our cost by three and a half million. You know, hitting a recurring deficit target of three and a half million. At this year and having a fund balance of four million. Um. That was predicated on achieving some enrollment growth, zero in twenty-four and five point one percent in twenty-five. We did not hit those targets. Um. Uh, we did though, uh, establish a fiscal twenty-five budget that projects to hit three and a half million dollar recurring deficit target. Um, and the fund balances are trending higher. We've seen that for, for a number of years. Um, and I, I wanna mention that our student to faculty ratio remains an unsustainable thirteen point one. Um. This all points to the need to rebalance. I mean, no plan goes according to plan. I mean, financial plan. So five years ago, four years ago. Whenever we established it, we established it with the best information we had, the best intentions we had. Things don't always go to plan and now we have to adjust. And so now we need to rebase it. On where we are today and then uh project forward five years, which we're doing. Um, and then uh look at our cost side and understand what we need to do to adjust to bring the budget into balance. In a short period of time, because I don't, my own personal opinion and my own professional opinion is that? You know, projecting out more than two or three years to get to a balanced budget is um challenging because things happen. And we have a, a state budget that's a two-year budget that we're gonna be going into next biennial. We have some reasonable. Good outlook for that. Um, we need to plan to get the budget in balance in the next two years, my professional opinion. So that then we're ready for the next biennial when maybe it isn't quite as good. Uh, we're ready for surprises that could happen in a number of different areas with enrollments and other things. Uh, just, I think it's a, it's a smart approach to trying to be aggressive, but um aligned with our strategic plan. So we are working that updated sustainability plan um. Based on, of course, assumptions that we can, can. Estimate reasonably, uh tuition rate increases, enrollment changes, state funding changes, faculty and salary benefit rate changes. SNS changes, those things. Um. And uh, and then see kind of where we need to adjust on the cost side to meet those. And we're working with our shared governance partners. Over the next uh number of weeks to develop that financial plan that will reduce ongoing expenses. And bring our balance, budget into balance um reasonably quickly. Um. And we have a plan to bring that updated preliminary uh budget for, for um that plan with an updated preliminary budget for next year to the board this spring. Allah, I said a lot there. Any questions? Okay, um, operational efficiencies. Um, I, you heard, we've start, we've begun the Banner Optimization Project. Um, I've been sitting in on some of the uh consultants uh. As they're engaging our functional teams, our operational teams and redesigning the activities, uh support back to baseline effort with Banner. But also uh really looking at. Innovating how we do things uh to, to today's technology and to uh really focus on. Um, streamlining, focus on customer experiences, focus on uh that, this leveraging these dollars that we, these precious dollars we were allocated. To do this project. Um, and to really see some changes come out of it to uh, to um um. What I wanna say. Um, streamline, but also to um. Remove paper from processes, improve our, our, our uh policies around processes. Um, and it's, it's a great opportunity. I've really, really been excited about the collaboration I've seen. A cross-functional collaboration between teams that, you know, that work and send processes that um go between function to function. That's been great. Um, I think the uh, the, there's been good excitement about it. There's been some aha moments. Uh, and so that's been really great to see. Uh, you'll get further reports obviously on that as that moves forward over the next couple of years. Any questions on that?
Um, Mike, a question on the, the banner. Uh, we use sustainability funds to implement that. Do you have a sense of whether or not we'll have the operating resources going forward to keep? That system updated and leverage, you know, new? Um, functionality that comes out? Over time, or is that something we need to be factoring into? You know, how are we gonna fund the maintenance of all of this?
That's a great question. I mean, the plan is that, that one of the, one of the baseline assumption is that? We will see cost savings enough in terms of the, of the um. Uh, administration of the ERP system um in other, in other spaces. And Tom's probably, if he's still on, a, a good, better person to answer this, but? That would then allow our, our budget to stay static or be reduced even going forward. And I, it's not an anticipation that we would have to add operational budgets to support a new banner. Um, system, but Tom, you can, if I'm wrong, please do jump in and correct the record. Um, but otherwise, that's what my understanding is. I did just move Tom back in the panelists.
Uh. So, so, so Mike, I think that sounds great. Um. The, yeah, so there is cost savings expected from the Banner Optimization Project. Um, there are some additional expenses that, that will come along. Um, but it, it'll be less than the cost savings. Um. The, the type of savings, like, like I think, I think Mike said, you know, a lot of it's gonna be. And time saved across lots of people. So it's, it's hard to correlate that to the cost of a piece of software. And um, I think that's going to be, you know, a difficulty at, at some point. Um, but there are, there are, there are also software savings that, that happen along the way as well. So I, I think you're, you're kind of asking for an ROI document and that's, that's um something that we're working on with our, our, our um our project managers and putting together so that we can track it um on an ongoing basis instead of just in the end.
I think another point. Go ahead.
Oh, go, go ahead. I'm not follow up.
Well, I think that, I think that, that there's another point though, too, that I think maybe Gail was making, maybe not. But as we go through this project, we should be cognizant of, of what we discover. And if we're seeing some things that will lead us to believe that there may be some added costs to get these efficiencies and other things that would have benefits that might not accrue to budget reductions. We need to be putting those in our plans and planning for them as soon as we can so that we can adjust um our budgets uh as we go forward. But at this point in time, I, we don't foresee that.
Yeah, one concern I would have is that with this seems like an enterprise kind of solution here. And if there isn't clarity on who is accountable for maintaining current versions of, of the software, you know, I would hate to see down the road, three years down the road just to use, to pick on payroll again. You know, we're on version nine, but, but we really should be on version twelve and we're missing out on further efficiencies, but we don't, we don't have a programmer analyst in-house to help us keep up with that version. So that's what I'm thinking is once the sustainability funds have been spent. Do we have a structure and resources to maintain this big investment that's been made?
Tom, maybe your best, go ahead.
Yeah, so if you think about the long-term plan of the project, so that right now we're trying to get back to baseline. And then the next step is to move to the SaaS product. Um, which is, if you, uh, if you use like an app on your phone or, or some other um web app, it kind of automatically update themselves over, over time. And um, so the, the SaaS product is going to be more like that where, where the updates are, are automated. The, but the, but I think you're right and, you know, just because it, it gets deployed um in the software doesn't mean that we're going to use it like in payroll or something like that. So that's um, that's, that is a concern, but it's not something that so you can manage centrally. That's something that each department will have to manage. You know, that they're utilizing new features as they come out.
Tom, trustee Perez put a question in the chat.
Only because I love a good scorecard. Um, and, and gaps, like we have our current state right now. So the, the one thing that I've always found in project management and just, you know, trying to explain what you're trying to do is like, where are you at current state, where you want to go and what's the gap? And then with that, you could potentially show your cost savings, whether they're soft cost savings or hard cost savings. Um, and so if you're improving, you know, workflows by thirty-five percent, what does that really mean? Um, you know, and then those resources would then focus on something else, you know, in the future. Or, or what do we plan on doing those resources with the extra time?
Yeah, so um, the, the BPA that just happened with Banner Student with Amy um and others, they'll, they'll present the consulting group is going to present a report to us in, in four weeks that says, this is where you are and this is the gap to get where your baseline. So each time we do one of these um EDBs or, or, or business process analysis activities, that will be what comes from the consulting group. And um, and then, you know, they'll have the plan that, that specifies what we need to do, to do to get from where we are to um, to the, the goal, the baseline goal. Um, I don't know yet, except if there's going to be dollar amounts and, and headcount savings that's included in that because we haven't received the first report back yet.
Tom, I think that's something we could talk with the steering committee about and with our consultants about to to be proactive on thinking about structuring in such a way that we can capture that information. Um, it may, I think, like um trustee Perez suggested, uh, some of these may be soft costs, but you can, you can, you can reasonably quantify some, some savings through that. Um, and kind of where they might be at. And it'll be important to know that because um, you know, if there's pieces of time across the organization and people's activity that then goes away or gets better. Um, that just raises if, if the ability for those people to re, repurpose that time and things that are maybe more strategically aligned with what we're trying to accomplish. So um, it, it doesn't end up being, hey, we save a million dollars, but there's, all of a sudden, there's a million dollars to spend somewhere. But it does allow us to be more, I think, intentional and strategic.
Thank you. Other questions?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, please continue, Mike.
Yeah, um, okay, so um trustee Evans asked it that for us to kind of, for me to kind of walk through a bit about our uh unit strategic plans um that we've put together. And I, I want to kind of baseline this a little bit here. Um, you know, I came in five months ago. It's not an excuse, but uh, that I, as an interim leader, I really wanted to balance the need to set in place and prioritize. You know, some of our near-term goals for our units to help ensure that progress is made, you know, toward reaching the university's goals. But with the importance of allowing a new leader the opportunity to work with the leadership um in the next several months to evaluate, you know, current goals and establish a, a longer-term vision for the finance administration team. So to that end, um, I engaged or we engaged in a relatively rapid process. Uh, you know, reviewing, understanding the university's strategic plan, developing a set of high-level divisional goals that reflect that plan. And then, you know, each unit inventorying their current unit goals with their team um and their projects and then aligning them with the strategic plan. If I can share my screen, Evan, if you want me to, I can pull up, let's see, if I can do this.
You do have the ability to share your screen. And just so folks know, I was doing that. Um, I, the alignment metric, uh, chart is included. I sent an email. It's included on the website. It has super, super tiny font, so I wanted to make sure it was separate from the docket because it'd be impossible to read in the docket without severely zooming in. So that's what we're going to do here.
And I hope, can you read that?
You might want to zoom in a little bit.
I will zoom some more. Let me see, where is that at? Here we go.
There you go.
Better? I can do more.
I can read it just fine. I don't know about anybody else.
Yeah, that's clear.
Great. Um, I don't plan to go through every one of these, um, but um I did want to, first I want to know, Tom, Rebecca and Shadrin and Camery are on in case there's any questions you have of their specific areas. Um, but you know, as you read through this table through its entirety, you'll note some commonalities between some of the unit goals. Um, those are reflecting division goals that apply to multiple units, um, as well as specific projects that span multiple units. So example, banner optimization program is noted in a couple of areas. Uh, and then goals around creating and reinforcing the importance of community and the university's success are going to be seen in some of those. Um, another area of commonality is for the units that develop and implement policies and procedures that impact our community members, for them to be intentional about engaging stakeholders and listening to feedback about how our policies and procedures impact the effectiveness and well-being of our students, faculty and staff. Um, that is an important um goal, an important um, uh, what's the word I want? Some skill that, uh, that, that needs to be developed because too often and too easy it's to say, well, the policy says we can't do something. Uh, it's much, much more engaging and much more, uh, it, well, the community appreciates it much more when you listen to the frustration. I'm not saying people aren't doing that, but I have experienced this at my previous institution and that's something I worked at there as well, was just listening. People will, people will respect if you listen. Uh, that, so that's important. Um, anyway, not to overly state on that. Um, and this, that, that also is going to be important, an important complement to the banner optimization project where we're really redesigning processes and rethinking policies uh, so that we can kind of get to a best case, a best optimization. Um, you'll also see that where um applicable FNA units intentionally included the actions assigned to their units that came from the university's equity assessment plan. So you'll see that in a, in a number of the areas. Now, just to highlight just some of the themes in each unit's goals, um, I, I'll just kind of go through really high level. So for computing ser- university computing services, you'll note a number of goals that prioritize systems and data security. Uh, really important. We talk about that, uh, at, you know, cybersecurity, we talk about that. And, and it's going to become more important as we try to unleash our data and get it in people's hands and need to use it to make decisions and you do their work. And then you also see goals that prioritize accessibility for students, faculty and staff to systems of data, just what I just mentioned. Those are, those create an inherent tension, uh, that'll be challenging to manage, but um, it'll be important to manage that to really see some things happen. And for campus safety, uh, you'll see goals that are focused on emergency preparedness for the Western community, as well as the broader Monmouth and Independence community. Important, um, to important to be, we just drilled last week. Uh, the entire leadership team drilled last week on uh an active shooter drill, just to kind of understand, okay, walk through a scenario, understand what's happening, think about what we do, think about how we act. Uh, what, what uh plans do we have in place, what, what processes, what um, what infrastructure need in place for those things. Uh, just another, an example of how the campus safety is, uh, campus public safety is really working to uh, to keep us safe. And then you also notice goals that prioritize student well-being and community safety. Um, really important, uh, really aligns with a number of our uh university's strategic goals. Uh, for accounting and business services, you'll see goals that reflect the master of the fundamentals charge I noted in my written report. Uh, you know, a focus on cash flows and cash management. Um, you also note, I see goals of focusing on streamlining operations by implementing technological updates and collaborating with key or operational partners across campus. These are, these are good goals. Um, for capital planning and construction, uh, you'll see a number of goals focusing on aligning space and space requirements to today, today's students and pedagogy. Um, you'll also note goals that prioritize effective capital construction, contracting and execution. Uh, for facilities services, you will, and I know I'm zooming through these really fast and I'm happy to, to go back, but um you'll, you'll see goals that are focused on improving energy efficiency and reducing deferred maintenance. Um, and importance, important for, um, you know, net zero type of goals and just important for uh seeing our, our facilities uh improved where we can, where we can get the funding for it to uh better serve our students and our, and our faculty and our community. Um, also goals there that prioritize workplace and community safety by focusing on reducing hazardous waste using eco-friendly products where possible and reviewing the lighting around campus spaces. Uh, all important goals that really kind of touch on a number of the uh broad institutional goals. And then for budget and planning, you'll see uh, are my biggest area of one person, but really important. Um, uh, area, some other master of the fundamentals type of goals, you know, improving budgetary precision and multi-year financial planning. We're, we're seeing that, we're executing on that with our updated sustainability plan and really focusing on that. And then uh focus more on regular monitoring of university budgets to actual and the athletics budget as well. We've put in place a, a, a periodic report or periodic meeting with athletics. Um, financial person and, and Randy, athletics director, to just focus on where their budgets are. And, and next year they'll have in place sport by sport budgets. So um, the idea here is to really kind of focus again on those fundamentals and to get us in a good position to, to uh, to focus on the things we need to do. University not, not um worrying about budgets as much and worrying about uh reaching goals of students and, and faculty in our community. Um, again, I went through those really fast. Uh, they're in your doc and they're in your materials. Um, and I don't know if I'll, I'll, I'll give, well, quickly I'll, I'll tell you what the next steps are, but then I'll open it up for if, if Tom or Cam or Rebecca or Shadrin want to add anything about their goals because I, I did zoom over them. Um, but the next steps, steps in this process will be really doing a deeper dive into the unit goals since these were just sort of put together in this format and, and thinking about them in alignment with the strategic plan. Um, informed by the budget priorities coming out of the development of the five-year plan. Then to prioritize those goals that align best with the strategic plan and budget priorities and limitations. So it's an ongoing process. And I think once we develop this process, it needs to be an ongoing process for the rest of eternity uh, to really, as we, as we reshape the strategic plan, reshape our budget priorities, really think about um, how, what we're doing impacts those things. And then that allows us a framework within which to prioritize scarce resources. So I'll stop um and see if Tom, Rebecca, Cam or um Shadrin have anything they would like to add. Put you on the spot.
I'll say something. Um, I was very, uh, you know, people get scared by the idea of a strategic plan, just like they do by the idea of an audit. Um, but I, I think it's a great uh focus and I, I don't know, I was impressed honestly is how quickly we all came together on this and um with, with Mike's experience um, in doing these, of course, it means a great deal and uh, and the way that and I, and I know this is important to the president and, and to the board is to have these tied to the strategic plan. And so to be able to really be thoughtful about it, engage our own teams, except for Cam, she doesn't have a team. Uh, but to be able to engage our own teams and, and to, to come up with these together so you get buy-in from the beginning, um, because you got everybody's voice in. And I had um the not custodial supervisor, he came, we had a meeting with, with all of our supervisory staff. And uh, he made that work and, and came because it was important to him to make sure the voices of not custodians are heard um, on how we um move forward with these plans. So it was a, it was a good process.
Mike, you're on mute, I think.
Ah.
Oh, there you are.
Yeah, I'm on. Oh, sorry. I apologize for these stray lines across here. I'm not very good at uh formatting. Uh, and so that's, those, those don't mean anything other than it means that Mike needs some remedial work on his formatting in uh shared Excel.
Well, I would just say this is the most robust division strategic plan I've seen since uh my work with the university. And I, I know it all links up to templates that are in use for the larger strategic plan. But this is really wonderful to see. Uh, and I, I'm impressed with this being a first pass. Um, uh, this is a wonderful tool for KB to, to use and for this committee to receive updates on um it in, um, you know, especially line eighty around unlocking opportunities. Um, you know, those, those things are wonderful, great strategic thought. It's not all just about metrics and finance and administration. And it looks like you have some really good synergies across the units. So, um, so thank you very much. I'm very impressed.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I think it's so, it's so much fun really to engage in these kind of activities because um it helps people unlock in themselves their connection to the university better and what they do and feel more, I think, um energized about the work that they do. And, and, and it's a positive process really. And so that's, that's what I experienced uh, at OSU. It's what I've experienced here in this very short period of time. Um, and it's, and it's not been um, and that the, the folks, you know, that, that my team did a really great job of just picking this up amongst everything else they had to do. Uh, the resources are thin, staff is, is thin and the work doesn't stop. But I appreciate them very much for that work.
Uh, Chair Evans, just for the context for our trustees, at our full board meeting, um, we will be Chair Evans, just for the context for our trustees, at our full board meeting, we will be. The president, the president and his team are working on an update for the larger strategic plan. And each division was required to do this alignment. The finance administration team did a wonderful job. The other divisions are working on similar things. So you'll see some of that in the larger board meeting as we give you our update of where we're at.
Thank you. Great. And hopefully all of you saw Dr. Peter's congratulatory note in the chat too. Good job.
Well, thank you.
Let's go on to the investment report and program review, please.
All right. Thank you. And Penny is on. That's terrific. So today we're going to kind of. Take it, an opportunity, spend some time really. Talking about our investment program here at Western and talking about it from a really. Baseline approach to make sure that we're all on the same page and have conversations around that. We'll talk a little bit about, you know, what are the board's responsibilities with respect to the investment programs? How they can carry that, those responsibilities out through the various tools. Talk about our investment programs, Penny will walk you through some, some information on that. The goal of which is to kind of establish a baseline understanding of what, of what we have. Where we need, where we may need to go. And then the next steps we'll talk about toward the end. Really quickly, you know, the board has a fiduciary responsibility to oversee the investment programs of the university. What does that mean? Well, that means that. There's a couple of things. We need, you need to understand what are the objectives of the various investment programs that we have. And then think about a risk return kind of analysis to, to drive how we think about investing those. Funds and then also to have in place a monitoring program to regularly test that. The, the outcomes, the results of those against. Metrics that are established as a part of that, that process. And then periodically review that again, because things change. We'll probably talk a little bit about some things that are, well, maybe not this time, but next time things changing perhaps around quasi-endowment, the outlook on investing that. But that's the kind of thing we need to do. So what I want to do is get a, get a place where we. Have an understanding of, of what your responsibility is so that we can support that. And then. The tools and how you carry that out in a little bit more detail. Penny, did I do a decent job of setting you up?
Yes, you did a great job. Thank you, Mr. Green and good afternoon trustees. And I apologize, I'm having some internet connection issues. So if you lose me, I promise I'll come right back in. All right. So I do appreciate the opportunity to join you this afternoon to provide an update about Western Oregon's investment program. And I thought it would be helpful because I may be a new face, a new name, a new voice to some. So I thought it'd be helpful to provide background about myself as well as USSE. So I do serve as the executive director as well as the director of treasury management services at USSE. I've been with USSE since our inception in 2014 and joined the Oregon University Systems Chancellor's Office in 2013. Prior to working in higher ed, I spent 25 years in the investment management industry managing international equity funds. As well as institutional and high net worth accounts. University Shared Services, Services Enterprise or USSE was organized in February of 2014 to provide shared finance. And administrative services to the Oregon Public Universities. And many of our original service offerings and staff were carved out of the former OUS Chancellor's Office. To support the universities upon independence. Our service offerings have changed over time. Today, USSE provides two essential services, labor relations. And treasury management services. Oregon State University is host to USSE and our employees. And in terms of treasury management services, my team provides accounting, reporting, compliance, administration. And consulting services to the Oregon Public Universities in the areas of cash, investment and debt management. And I am often invited to university board meetings to discuss the university's debt and investment management programs. Next slide, please. Western Oregon University's investment program covers operating assets and board-directed quasi-endowment assets. The current investment strategy for the operating assets was modeled after the Oregon University Systems or OUS investment approach using both short-term. And intermediate-term fixed income securities and strategies. The primary objective for the investment of Western Oregon's operating assets is capital preservation. With a secondary objective of total return in income. So based upon university cash flow forecasts, assets required to meet university liquidity needs over a rolling 12-month basis. Are invested in a money market fund structure with daily liquidity. Assets in excess of liquidity needs are invested in intermediate fixed income securities. To generate interest earnings in excess of money market returns over the long term. Now, the university does not have a formal investment policy for the operating assets and this. May be an area for consideration for this committee. The quasi-endowment assets are excess operating assets that were directed by the board for longer-term investment. To support student scholarships and other university programs. The quasi-endowment was established in 2019 with a million dollar funding and subsequent investments. Of 850,000 in 2021 and 2022. The board approved a statement on investment of the assets to provide portfolio guidelines for the investment of the assets. Including the investment objective of moderate capital appreciation over an intermediate-term time period. The policy directs an asset allocation with a balanced approach targeting 55% allocation to global equities. 45% to fixed income. And 5% to cash. Then in June of 2024, the university withdrew 400,000 of portfolio gains to fund university initiatives. Next slide, please. Upon independence, Western Oregon initiated a banking and investment agreement with the Oregon State Treasury or OST. And this agreement allowed the university to continue with banking services and cash management programs established under OUS. OST, given its scale of assets and scale of banking services, provides many banking and investment services. To Western Oregon at a competitive and attractive costs versus other banking competitors. As an independent entity, Western Oregon has the unique ability to engage services from OST. As well as from other external banks such as US Bank. Western Oregon does have a separate banking agreement with US Bank to support the student e-disbursement program. Oregon State Treasury provides an attractive and competitive liquidity product called the Oregon Short-Term Fund or OSTF. And the OSTF is managed similarly to a money market fund, investing in liquid, short-term fixed income instruments. The Public University Fund or the PUF is a pooled investment product. Offered to the Oregon Public Universities and provides university participants exposure to intermediate-term fixed income markets. Investments are managed by the Oregon State Treasury. And Oregon State University, one of five university participants in the Public University Fund serves as the current administrator. For the PUF. OSU contracts with USSE to perform the majority of the administrator duties. Additional investment options are provided by OST. Which include a similar fixed income pool called the Oregon Intermediate Term Fund. As well as a small number of external and, uh, external equity and fixed income managers. Or endowment assets. Next slide, please. Drill, drilling just a little bit deeper into the portfolio characteristics of the funds used for the operating cash management. This slide shows the Oregon Short-Term, Short-Term Fund or OSTF's primary objective is the preservation of capital. And similar to a money market fund, it provides daily liquidity. This fund is set up as a sweep vehicle. It's linked to Western Oregon's bank accounts held with the Oregon State Treasury. And cash transfers into and out of the Oregon Short-Term Fund are managed by OST via an automated sweep process. Now, as guided by OSTF's investment policy, it invests in high-quality, short-term fixed income securities. It's noted here on the slide, the portfolio had an average credit quality of double A. As of September 30, 2024, and had an average maturity of point two, three years. And what this means is the securities in the portfolio are maturing. And the proceeds from those maturing securities are rolling into new securities approximately every two and a half months. The average five-year performance was 2.4%. And this five-year period does include that zero short-term interest rate. Environment that we all experienced during the depths of the pandemic in 2020 and 2021. The PUF core bond fund, per its investment policy, invests in quality intermediate-term fixed income securities. Ranging in maturities from three to seven years. The portfolio had an average credit quality of double A minus. And an average maturity of the portfolio securities of 3.78 years as of September 30. The average five-year performance was 2.1% for the core bond fund. As its securities are more susceptible to interest rate changes and bond price volatility. Uh, which definitely fixed income funds experienced in 2022 and into early 23. Western Oregon University staff provide rolling 12-month cash flow forecast to USSE at least semi-annually. For review and assessment of the optimal asset allocation between the Oregon Short-Term Fund and the Core Bond Fund. The USSE Treasury Management Team monitors account balances daily and assesses liquidity positions on a monthly basis. And during periods when cash flow forecasting variances are minimal, we can ideally plan for liquidity needs on a rolling six to 12-month basis. Next slide, please. As of September 30th, 2024, Western Oregon had 34% of their assets allocated to the Oregon Short-Term Fund. And 66% of assets to the Core Bond Fund. Now, USSE staff have been working closely with Mike Green's office and the controller's office. In the recent months to fine-tune the cash flow forecast and optimize the asset allocation strategy. So subsequent to September 30th, $10 million in core bond fund assets were sold. And are now on deposit in the Oregon Short-Term Fund, increasing that liquidity position. Next slide, please. As of September 30th, 2024, Western Oregon had 36.3 million in operating assets on deposit. Which is a decline of 8.9 million versus September 30th, 2023. And this decline is due to cash flow activity and is not related to a decline in investment performance. Uh, which was positive for this one-year period. So as Mike Green discussed during the previous agenda item, this is primarily due to a drawdown. Or spend down of the funds for the streamlined project. Net investment earnings were 2 million. For the one-year period, that's a $290,000 increase over the prior year. And that is directly related to the rising short-term interest rates. A realized loss on sales from the Core Bond Fund totaled 570,000. Uh, and this is related to the rapid rise in interest rates during the 2022, 23 period. Causing fixed income securities to decline in value. An offset to that, however, is the increasing interest rates, which drove the higher interest income. And as you can see, in the 2022, 23 period, at, as of September 30, 2023. There was a unrealized loss position in the Core Bond Fund of 1.8 million. And due to a slight decline in interest rates since September 30 of 2023. The unrealized position at the end of September of 2024 was a gain, slight unrealized gain of 196,000. So we've, we've experienced a lot of volatility in the fixed income markets just over a, a two and a half year period. So all in, you can see net investment income activity of 1.4 million. Net of the realized loss during the year. So I do like to remind the university staff as well as trustees to anticipate both realized gains and realized losses. From the Core Bond Fund positions. And over time, over a longer-term period, we would expect the gains and losses to net. So really kind of looking backwards towards the, since the inception of the Public University Fund in 2014. Uh, Western Oregon has recorded a net realized gain of 150,000. Uh, and meeting that primary objective of capital preservation. You can see investment yield, 5% for the combined exposure to the Oregon Short-Term Fund and the Core Bond Fund as of September 30th, 24. We are now anticipating that this yield may be a peak for this current business cycle. As the Oregon Short-Term Fund yield is now declining to 4.7%. The Core Bond Fund hold is holding pretty steady at 4.9%. But I would anticipate the Oregon Short-Term Fund rates to decline, probably closer to four and a half percent. Uh, over the next few months. So before I move on to the quasi-endowment, are there questions related to the investment program for operating assets?
Any questions? Not seeing any hands. I'm, I'm curious, Penny, from your vantage point, you know, seeing other universities. And. Earlier in our meeting, Mike was talking about. Opportunities to better optimize our liquidity to, you know. Put more money into the short-term fund and. And improve our, our cash or current ratio. And is, do you have the ability to give us some insight or suggestions? On, you know, what other university have, have done to optimize their liquidity so that it can. You know, give us a little more earnings in a, in a short-term basis. Do you have the ability to, to look at that with us and. Help us identify some of those opportunities?
I do. I, I certainly do have insight into other university programs. I will tell you. Five of the seven universities in Oregon all invest in the Oregon Short-Term Fund and the Core Bond Fund. And so all are utilizing a similar strategy. And we made some changes to the Public University Fund in July of 2024. That really allows for each university to optimize. That allocation between the short-term fund and the intermediate-term fund or any other investment programs. Uh, but certainly to meet those liquidity needs. So prior to July of 2024, both the Oregon Short-Term Fund and the Core Bond Fund. Were part of the Public University Fund and asset allocation was determined on an aggregate basis as opposed to an individual university basis. So some of the changes that we made, trustee Evans, just here recently in July of 2024 will help. And we've taken advantage of that already for Western Oregon. Uh, and so as mentioned earlier, we've, we've reduced Western's position in the Core Bond Fund. And reallocated that to the Oregon Short-Term Fund. So that was a $10 million. Change to reduce exposure in the Core Bond Fund and increase the Oregon Short-Term Fund. And it's a continual. Communication process between Western Oregon's finance staff and my USSE staff. and my USSE staff um in terms of cash flow forecasting and expectations. So as those cash flow forecasts are refined, that those are the perfect inputs into the most optimized um investment program, for sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move forward to the quasi-endowment? Okay, next slide, please. All right. So in twenty eighteen, Western Oregon's Finance and Administration Committee reviewed three different investment advisors and their investment options. And ultimately selected the Oregon State Treasury as the investment advisor to support management of the quasi-endowment. Utilizing a combination of passive e- equity and active fixed income managers to achieve a balanced portfolio strategy. So the assets are custodied with the Oregon State Treasury's custodian, State Street. And the custodian expenses are included in the state treasury's extremely competitive fee rate of three basis points. So it's essentially, I like to say, the, the custodial fees um are zero. Um, because the, the three basis points that the state treasury is charging uh really is reflective of their staff's time and the administration's time. Uh, that three basis points also includes due diligence support from Oregon State Treasury's Investment Advisor, Makita. Uh, it includes some basic performance reporting as well as trading administration. Western Oregon also contracts with USSE to provide the accounting compliance uh and quarterly reporting as well as due diligence support for this quasi-endowment fund. So the investments include the Black Rock All Country World Index, which is a passively managed equity index fund of global equities. And Black Rock has performed well during the life of the endowment, increasing an average of twelve point one percent over five years. The Western Asset Core Plus Fund Fund is an actively managed fixed income fund, including US dollar um denominated fixed income security as well as non-dollar securities, about ten percent allocation to the non-dollar fixed income securities. Fixed income market performance over the five years has been challenged uh by a rapidly rising interest rate environment. Uh, as discussed previously, resulting in the negative returns you see for this fund over three years and five years, down four point two percent. Uh, and down point six percent respectively. So as many of you will recall, we recommended to the board in December that this fund be sold due to concerns over internal controls. As well as relative underperformance. And the proceeds from the sale um are currently on deposit in the Oregon Short Term Fund, which is the sweet product for the cash balance in the endowment's bank account with the Oregon State Treasury. So in terms of total performance, the endowment gained six point six percent for five years, um on average for five years ending September thirty. And exceeds the policy's objective of five percent average annualized returns over five years. Total market value of the quasi-endowment was just north of three million dollars at the end of September. And my staff and I are working closely with the Oregon State Treasury staff to review fixed income managers. And will provide a recommendation to this committee at your next meeting in April. Uh, given the recent volatility in fixed income markets due to interest rate changes, investing the proceeds and holding those proceeds uh in the Oregon Short Term Fund, which is currently yielding four per four point seven percent is a very prudent strategy uh until a replacement fund is reviewed and approved. Any questions about the quasi-endowment? Okay, next slide, please. And Mike, I'll hand it back to you to talk about next steps.
Great. So, uh, yeah, thank you, Penny. Really appreciate that. Um, so just really quickly, sort of a, a summary here, you know, we've, the ways in which, okay, we have two investment programs. We have our operating assets, our quasi-endowment. The ways in which the board can exercise their fiduciary uh responsibilities, I think, are twofold or maybe threefold. One is an investment policy that is established for each of those. We don't have one right now. For the operating assets, we've sort of inherited one from the past. It's not like, and Penny's been reporting every quarter on re- results relative to kind of the policy benchmarks and such that was inherited. But I think it would make sense for you to be more um uh clear and about your directions around that and create a policy around that. And then, you know, quasi-endowment has a policy uh guiding it. So there, there's that. And then, um, again, periodic reports, monitoring, um, and then periodic, probably in a little bit longer term, reevaluating of those, reevaluation of those policies around risk-return, around what's the, what's the intent of the, of the program? Uh, what is the, what are the balances? Should we think differently about risks and returns, given where the, where things are with respect to the university's financial position? All those things can come into uh, I think, the guidance that you establish in the policy. Um, and then a part of those policies, and we talked about a little bit when we uh took, when we asked you to take action on the Western asset, was delegations. You know, what appropriate delegations should you have or not have with respect from you to the president, to the vice president, to administer these programs? And so what I would suggest is that we um come back to you in the next meeting with a couple of things. Um, one um, uh, draft policies around operating assets and quasi-endowment fund. Uh, that, that can be a little bit chicken before the egg in a way, because I think we need to have that conversation around risk-return. But those things, those policies could be the framework within which we have that conversation and then adjust accordingly as, as we have that conversation around that. Um, excuse me, um, and, and it's Penny, you, you would have, I think, better sense of this, but we could also bring a recommended fixed income manager to that, to that. Um, maybe that's jumping a little ahead of this risk-return conversation that we should have first, but I also don't want to um delay that too far. So, uh, Penny, I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, and, and I do appreciate uh that question, because I, I am interested, certainly, within the quasi-endowment. Um, the goal would be to, to optimize um returns as well as risk and, and thinking out, out um over the next two or three years, if there's any needs uh by the university for, for funds from this quasi-endowment. So that will all be part of the, the, the process and the discussion. Um, but we certainly can start with a draft policy and that can um certainly motivate additional conversation and changes around that initial draft policy. Or in terms of the quasi-endowment, we can review uh the current policy uh and certainly have discussions around um any requested changes to that policy. If, if risk and return appetite is, is is anticipated to change.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to flag that a little bit around, because I do think as we establish this next uh um financial sustainability plan. Um, looking at projections going forward, looking at projections of fund balance going forward, and looking at, you know, reserve levels that are prudent. You know, this fund, even though the board established it to not be used for operations and that, that we're trying to adhere to that going forward. I think there may result a greater risk of needing to tap this in a shorter term than what we would have thought. We would think, uh, we thought originally and where we would think maybe today. And so that's, it's timely that we talk about this, informed by that um, that sustainability plan and what are the risks inherent in it? And where are the levels of fund balance going to go in that, when, till we get balanced and then uh start building back our reserves? And is there an inflection point there that says, you know, um, there's a risk here that we may need to tap that in year two, year three, to some extent, which means we might need to think about our risk-return appetite and, and shorten that up or um provide, take less risk in those investments in the near term until we get through that. I don't think we're ready to, to uh to, to have enough, we don't have enough information yet to make that call, but I did want to flag that for you, because I think it's it's really great timing, I guess, that we're talking about this at this particular time, uh, so that we can wrap it all up in the conversation. So if that's, okay, uh, yes, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thanks, Mike, for uh the presentation and actually both of you for the presentation. I'm, you know, this is my first finance committee meeting. Uh, I actually sat on the finance committee about fifteen years ago. And uh, so uh, it's a little bit of a return, but it's very different from where we were in two thousand and ten or so. Um, at the time, I recall there was a finance committee and an investment committee. And um, it sounded like there might be an investment committee today. Is that correct? Or is it really just running through the finance committee?
It's running through the finance committee, if you are it.
So, okay, and my, my follow-up question was gonna be, do we have any capital markets people on the finance, on the finance or investment committee? Uh, because I look at this and I know just enough to be dangerous. I sit on the finance committee for Salem Health and, and a couple of others, but we all, we have all these resources that come to us around um, questions about investment strategy. Do we see that here at all, or is that something we need to think about moving towards?
It's a great question. I mean, I do think we have. Uh, I, I don't know your incoming VP's level of understa- or level of experience in, in capital investing or investing. You know, Penny talked about hers. I know, uh, um, uh, Director Evans um has experience in pension fund and maybe missing some too. So there is various levels of expertise and investments uh in, in a few, in Penny certainly, and, and Chair Evans and may perhaps others, but I don't know the answer to, to that with the other people. And then we have an opportunity, I may be stepping out of line, have an opportunity to add some people to the finance committee coming up that might be an interesting consideration to think about.
I think, thank you for that. Yeah, and actually just know, knowing the experience, I know Penny has a significant amount of experience here and just, I'm wanting to make sure we have a rounded sort of group of volunteers as well, so.
Great question.
Yeah, I was basically gonna echo what um trustee Zook was just saying that uh it, this is a little bit out of my element. I mean, I know enough to follow along and understand what's going on, but in terms of like me being able to proactively provide some strong input to it, it's we're getting into the gray zone. So I think it would be helpful for us to maybe look at strengthening that part as well.
You know, one of the things that Penny does do for us is provide that, does provide that as part of her services is that, that view. But I'm not, I mean, I, I think, I think that's something we should bring back in this next meeting too, is, is just consider that for a moment about, you know, what level, because I, I remember when I was with the old OUS board, and I think uh trustee Zook was, was referencing that. There was an investment committee of the OUS board, which I staffed as, as the controller um at that point in time. Um, and then we had investment consultants that were paid consultants that advised us. Um, and Penny is, I think, in that position for us. And I think we could evaluate, not, not Penny, but I mean, evaluate where like-sized universities are, like, what, what, what we should have and think about that and um as, as far as a conversation next meeting, if that makes sense.
Mike, I, I think that's an excellent observation. Uh, you know, understanding where others sit uh and, and how they're deploying their resources, I think is really uh important to, to our own education uh as a finance committee.
Okay. Well, with that, we will then take those as our next steps and uh I will be advising KB uh as we transition. Um, and I talked to him on Friday um about lots of things, and I'll be mentioning this to him as well. Uh, as something to add to the, to the upcoming tasks, then the task list will be long.
So, Mike, just to close up next steps, it sounds like there's gonna be a need for your team, Penny and I, to kind of work together to develop a draft of potential um investment policies to bring back to the, this committee next uh meeting. And then make sure that Penny is ready to kind of see where we're at compared to the other OU, quote-unquote, old OUS universities in the state. To see what their investment strategies look like to, to kind of uh inform what ours, if we're in line, if things should change, et cetera, et cetera. Is that a good synopsis of where we're at?
Yeah, I think strategies, but also um uh oversight or um review resources to the board um to help them carry out their uh fiduciary responsibilities, because we, we need to support that.
Sounds great.
Terrific. Well, that uh is the end of that item. So thank you. Thank you, Penny.
Thank you, Penny.
Thank you all.
Okay, well, I see a, an agenda taking place for April already. Um. And it's a nice segue into our committee goals. Um, you know, there are things that we need to maintain uh in terms of our regular um business, um ongoing business responsibilities of this committee. So you know, bringing the recommended budget, bringing the management reports, uh doing these scheduled hygiene items, so to speak. Will be part of our goals. Uh, and then additional items that we've talked about today that require follow-up and alignment with strategy, um, or just to step back and saying, hey, you know, how do we provide oversight? You know, what is the appropriate structure for oversight? Uh, and, and um of these investment uh activities of the university. So um we, I understand that we will be having a framework for committee goals uh for, that's consistent across the different committees, but you know, if you have thoughts about um any of these items we've discussed today in terms of, you know, we have only a certain number of meetings left in this academic year. Uh, but you know, what are some milestones or priorities that this committee wants to bring back and um, and um make it a priority for us to give our attention and time to? Um, we would really appreciate, I would really appreciate that input. Um, I tend to have longer lists than are practical, so when we do get this committed to a format, then it might be a matter of paring it down and having our new VP of FA uh give us a um, a realistic uh input on uh what our committee goals can look like, because it all has to be supported by uh the staff of the university. So I'm sensitive to that. Another hygiene item that we would have in our goals is to review our committee charter. And uh, and so I believe, I don't think we've sent that out yet, Evan, but if you could send it to the committee and have you all take a look at it, maybe a next step on that would be to prepare to discuss maybe some redline changes at the April meeting as well. Another thing to consider is, you know, as we define roles for investment oversight, that might trigger, or some of the board policy changes or statements could trigger change to our charter. But that's just life, you know, chicken or the egg. We gotta, we gotta do what we noted today and then remember little placeholders for things as they evolve. So um, so just wanted you all to be prepared to look at the charter. Think about priorities that you want to have us address. Uh, and certainly I will be having uh offline conversations with the leadership as well. And uh, and then we will be aligning it with overall strategies. So hopefully that makes sense. Are there any initial thoughts or, or questions the committee might have about our goals or this process?
Uh, so real quick, um, the trustees did receive the charter um before our first meeting. I will send a reminder, or I'll send another copy of the charter. And what I'll do is I'll share our trustees on a a track change document in Google Drive like we did last time, where we could see people's recommendations and go back and forth. And we can walk through that the next meeting if we have, if we make some progress, so folks can see where, where we were going. see where, where we were going on that. And since no decisions will be made, it won't be a violation of public meeting stuff. So I think that's a good way to do it. I do think one of the things that I recently learned that Mike's team did over the last year, and I'm sure it took a lot of work, was revamping our deferred maintenance list for the state. And I think that that's something that we should, maybe not right now because of staffing and personnel, but in the next year, think about making sure that that's in the radar as as it becomes a larger part of the discussion at the legislative level, just keeping, thinking how we can support our staff into keeping that list updated and mindful to help facilitate conversations and strategic outlook for the future. And making sure that we, that the trustees have some vision on what are the top priorities of the deferred maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, just so you're informed of like, the the, the decisions that Mike's team are having to make and the impact on the university of those. For example, like roof or heating system, et cetera, et cetera, and the balance of like, what makes sense at this time for, for these things are decisions that I don't think the trustees hear often are like decisions that we're having to make. And that might be helpful as part of that work plan to get some updates on just deferred maintenance.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Okay. Right. Now, going then on to our board meeting preparation. We have the usual management report that will go into the consent agenda. And, oh, the single audit, the financial audit will go to the board as well, correct? And will that also be a consent agenda item?
So the way we've done it in the past, and I'll lean to you all for guidance, but the way we've done it in the past is we've had Kristen on at the beginning of the Tuesday, the Wednesday meeting to answer any questions folks have, but it will be part of the consent agenda. So what I'll do is I'll send out a, a note to the board, just making sure that they're aware that we're going to have someone present to answer questions. And if they have questions ahead of time, please send them to us so that we can make sure Kristen has them in advance, so she's prepared to answer specific questions if folks have them. But that's what we did last time and seemed to work well.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for board preparation?
Um, I, I just think folks want to be mindful that because of some of the updates that Mike gave around the five-year plan, there might be folks coming to the meeting for public comment. And just a reminder to our trustees that for public comment, we're here to listen, we would be there to listen to public comment. And that if there are things we need to respond for, we have a process, but that trustees don't, don't feel like you need to respond in that moment. That there's a process to respond to, to feedback. And we'll make sure that we work through our board leadership and our senior leadership to get answers to those the things that we need to respond to.
All right.
That's the last thing I need to say about the board meeting coming up.
Thank you. Any other updates? Open, open floor for the committee members. All right, well, just another, thank you to Mike for five months of helping us out, bringing your perspective, highlighting opportunities and, and just supporting the, the, the team in that division. It's been really key and you've made a difference. And I'm sorry you didn't get to retire the way you thought you might, but maybe you can get back to it now.
Well, there's some plans for that, that's for sure. But no, it's been, it's been, it's been a delight to meet you all. And I'll be, I guess I'd be working to transition, help KB transition. Don't yet know exactly, but tentatively, I'll say, you know, I'm on two weeks kind of full-time in March as he starts and then the rest of March on an hourly basis is sort of what I think we talked about. That may change, but that's kind of where it looks like right now. I did that at Oregon State and it seemed to work okay. But, but anyway, no, great, the team's great. There's a lot of hard work being done and there's a lot of opportunity to, I think, make things better as we go forward and we're taking on some pretty pretty tall tasks as a part of it all. So it's, it's a lot of good things going on.
Yeah, and I did forget one more thing about the board, which is that we are going to invite KB to attend our board meeting in February. So we're hopeful that he'll be here at least for the Wednesday portion. But we're hoping to get him here for both days. So I don't think we've actually confirmed yet that that's happening, but that's, that's been requested, that if he has the capacity, since it is before his start date, that he can come and at least say hi to the board.
He was tentatively scheduled to sign his lease this Friday, but he got postponed until Mondays, but he is, he was here in town, was going to sign a lease for a place to live, so that's all good.
And, yeah, so I'm hopeful he'll be here and you all can meet him and and yeah, looking forward to it.
All right. Okay, well, thank you all for your great questions and comments and participation today, and I look forward to seeing you at the board meeting in about a week. Or two, two weeks.
So much, everyone. Bye-bye.